Let's call them.
I can do it.
Okay, Mike.
Go ahead. Welcome to the PTBC joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees and the Permanent Town Building Committee. Today is March 3rd, 2025. Reminder that the meeting is being recorded and any comments made as well as those entered into the chat will become part of the public record. And I think we'll start with roll call.
Okay, here we go with the meeting members. Dirks here, Fleckner.
Here.
Roach. Here. Secor.
Here.
Steagle.
Here.
Teal. Thought I saw the.
I did too.
Here, sorry, here. Didn't get my mute off quick enough.
Okay. Cook.
Here.
Hazelton.
Here.
Karpinski.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Roberts.
Here and welcome back, Mike.
Thank you.
And is Tom Wimberg here?
Tom is on vacation for a few weeks, so he won't be here for the next couple sessions.
Okay. Zagowitz then? No? Okay. Um, now, extra people, Berlinsky? Or Perkins?
No.
Leiberg?
Here.
Rainville?
Here.
Lass?
Here.
Goodwin?
He's on vacation.
Okay. McGraw-Roy?
Here.
Patil? Sawyer? None of the FAA, the, none of the FAA people are here, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Here we go. Mike, we can continue.
Sorry, um, so I think we'll do the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. I was not present, so I'll abstain myself when we do the vote.
Okay, yep.
So do you want to do the roll call for the minutes?
Motion, motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
I make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple comments to those notes.
Okay.
Um, and I guess, um, after the Select Board meeting a few weeks ago, I'm gonna look at the notes a little tougher, I guess. Sorry, Buffy.
That's all right. I'm happy to have you do that.
Um, under item 3B, OPM report number six, and, and maybe Jennifer can, tell me if this is correct. Item number six, it says bidding for elevator did not include anyone new. I thought bidding for elevator did not include anyone. Period.
It did not include anyone. Period.
Okay, I will correct that then. Yep.
And, um, item, three reports, E, Library Working Group Recommendations, number two, it says add unique pendant lights over central stairway and teen area, but I think we're taking the teen area lights and adding them to the stairwell.
So, okay, go ahead.
I believe we're going to be adding a, a light fixture that is not identical to it, but is perhaps a, the same manufactured light fixture, but a different finish of that light fixture.
Okay, so similar to the teen area, but we're not adding them to the teen area.
No.
We're just adding them to the stairwell.
It's the lighting fixture that's used in the teen area is the typology.
So the sentence might be add unique pendant lights similar to teen area over central stairwell.
Yep, okay.
Okay, and then my last item is same paragraph number three. Uh, it says consider the following recommended prioritized. Oh, okay, prioritized. Okay. I have no other comment.
I have one quick question. This is Mary Ann. Section E, 1D, what is a lay light?
Um, the, which area, Mary Ann, go ahead.
Yep, section E, 1, I'm sorry, 3, 3D.
3D, okay.
At the top of the page, and it says end lay light.
Um, could I respond to that? So this is in the Mary Atwood room, so we have the decorative ceiling on the Mary Atwood room, and in the center is currently a painted area that looks like the sky, but we're actually going to be putting in a light fixture in there, and the terminology for what type of lighting fixture that is, is a lay light, because it lays on top of, you won't be seeing light fixtures, you'll only see the light from that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? So Jean, I don't know if anything requires amendment, um, other than the one note we discussed with the elevator, it's more of a clarification. So Scott, I would say that the motion would still stand, or do we need to modify it?
I think I make a motion to approve as amended.
Yeah, amended, yep.
We'll suck, Gunther.
Okay. All right, here we go with the voting then. Dirks, I, Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
Secor.
I.
Steagle.
I.
Teal.
I.
Cook.
I.
Hazelton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
Hi.
Patton.
I abstain.
Thank you. Roberts.
I.
Wimberg is not here, and Zagowitz is not here, so let me see, 1, 2, 3, 10, 0, 1. So Mike, you want to go on to the joint minutes for the 12th?
I can do that. So this will be approval of the meeting, of the meeting minutes on February 12th?
Yep.
So, anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
So that was Nancy and Mary Ann?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need to do roll call for that one as well, Buffy?
Yeah, I just was waiting for any comments, but I guess they were none. Okay. Dirks, I, Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
Secor.
I.
Steagle.
I.
Teal.
I.
Cook.
I.
Hazelton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
Hi.
Patton.
I abstain.
Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg is not here, Zagowitz not here, 10, 0, 1.
All right. I think that's it for minutes.
Yep.
And reports, so architects report.
Do we don't have Find Gold Alexander tonight, and we can go straight to Jennifer McCrory, our OPM?
Can I, can I jump back in? I'm so sorry. I'm looking at the attendance from February 12th, the joint meeting. Caroline was not there and Mary was not there. So I have to record them as abstaining as well?
Correct.
Okay, so it actually was not 10, 0, 1. It would be 8, 0, 3.
Good catch.
Okay, go ahead.
Jennifer?
Hello, everyone. Um, let me know if you can't hear me. But I'm gonna jump into our report. This is since our last meeting, um, which is from the 12th. So there has been a number of items that have been happening. Importantly, um, we have been, um, we are in the bidding phase of our construction scope of work. We have to date received 121 RFIs from the bidding, um, uh, different bidding, attendees. The, um, we have also issued some addenda for that. Um, our major milestones are that, we are going to receive our filed sub bids on Thursday at 2:00 PM. This is an important deadline for us. And then also, um, following that, our major, um, our GC bids will be due on March 20th at 2:00 PM. That is representing the statutory requirement of, um, two weeks, um, min, sorry, it's a, there's a minimum time between the two, but we have two weeks, which is, um, beyond the statutory requirements, but the, um, uh, recommended amount of time. We, um, have also, uh, the temporary library space on Groton Road, um, has had a lot of, um, work being done to it. There, um, the landlord has undertaken testing for the fire alarm and the sprinkler system. We have heard verbally that, um, the news was good, but we are waiting the formal test results on that. Um, and then also, um, we had donated shelving, which, um, the installation is underway for that. And that is in the basement level. Um, we also hosted, um, we have published the invitation for bid for the, um, moving, professional moving services. If you recall, we discussed this at our last, um, joint committee meeting. We believe the value of this is approximately $337,000. This is, um, a complicated, um, scope of work, which includes the, um, packing and, um, moving of the material, some material to the temporary library, some material to a, um, secure, climate-controlled storage space, and then also includes the, um, return of material from the temporary library back to the, um, completed library when the construction is done, and also the return of the material from that, um, off-site storage facility back to the library when it's done. And this, um, includes moving not only of books, but it also includes moving of, um, some of the shelving units as well as, um, moving of artwork and antique furniture, as well as the, um, commercial office furniture and, um, material for the library staff, so, um, the, um, professional effects and the, um, technology elements, so the material perhaps at somebody's desk, for example. We, um, completed and issued an invitation to bid for that project. We, um, had 14 different companies solicit to receive the bid. Um, and then last Friday, we had a walkthrough, um, at the library, the existing library, as well as the temporary library, and we had five companies, um, um, attend that walkthrough, and those bids are due on March 12th. We also have two other, invitations to bids that are, um, in process of being prepared. Those are for construction testing and window testing, and for those of you who are on the, um, joint committee call on the 12th, there was a question raised about, um, roof testing, and so, um, that was a, a, a good point that was raised on that. We have gone back to our, um, commissioning consultant as well as our, um, project engineers, and we have, um, asked about what roof testing should be added into the construction testing and what is already in there. We are adding in some additional roof testing. Later on, at the, um, later on in tonight's meeting, when we go through proposals for services, we're going to discuss roof testing as well. Our commissioning agent, um, has proposed some additional testing services that they can provide. When we have that proposal in front of us, I will, um, speak up then and, and go into that in more depth. But, um, the two proposals for independent construction testing that will happen during the construction period, we will be including, um, uh, some, uh, roof testing on that, um, so thank you for bringing that point up, and we are amending those. Those, um, invitations for bid are, um, have not gone out yet. Those are something that we anticipate going out within the next two weeks. Um, our deadline for that is a little bit looser, where, um, we need them to be engaged, um, approximately, um, mid to late April, so we have a little bit of time with that. In addition, um, the contract for CHA, um, we are preparing, um, an update to our contract. It was, um, our contract was written with a commentary that it extended through, um, the bidding phase of this project, and, um, that was written that way because, as you may or may not be aware, if the bidding numbers were or are not successful, um, there is always the potential that we could have, um, an issue with the project continuing if the project is significantly overbid, over budget. So, um, the contract was written in that manner, um, and right now we are, um, issuing an update to continue our contract, um, services through construction and project closeout. We are working with, um, Kristen Lass as well as Mike Edwards and Ellen Rainville on that. And, um, for everyone's knowledge, that doesn't include, um, any additional costs. We've already provided, provided our proposal for the services, so there's no change in the cost related to that or change in the schedule, um, related to that. And, um, another, um, item that I believe some of us were talking about as the meeting, um, before the meeting kicked off, but there was a select board meeting, um, last week, and, um, in that we, um, the Select Board approved to waive the permit, um, application fees, so that's for the building permit, and then, um, in addition, all the subsequent permits, like electrical permits or plumbing permits that come in, um, conjunction with a building permit. Um, that was directly related to information we are also providing for the, um, bidding package for the project. That is our update. Are there any questions? So, Jean?
Yes. Hi, uh, good update, very clear, um, very extensive. One item back to your first topic, the filed sub bids and the questions, that, what'd you say, 120 RFIs?
Yes.
Um, can you describe sort of in summary what the depth and breadth of that, of the nature of the 120?
Yes.
Give us a feeling of if that's typical and/or if there was something really tough in there.
Um, well, I would say that, uh, more than 50% of the questions are coming related from filed sub bidders, and what they are asking are, in whose ownership are certain items. So for example, um, we have, uh, filed sub bid trade, which is metal windows, and then we also have a different filed sub bid trade, which is, um, waterproofing and sealant. And so on a window, there is also sealant that goes around it, and so, um, they're asking for clarification of how those, um, two items of scope are differentiated. A similar type of, uh, another example of a question would be that we had, um, new lighting on the exterior on the parking lot. Those are electrical, um, light poles, and they also have a concrete base. So please define the ownership of the concrete base versus the electrical light pole and which filed sub bid trade. So this is, um, because this is public construction, the filed sub bid, the delineation of work scope, it's really important that that is explicitly clear, and, um, we, we did get a, a good quantity of companies who have, um, bid on that. I would say that at least out of the 120 RFIs, I think we've got about, um, 20 or 25 so far that are actually just duplications of questions where more than one company asked the same question, and so that is also a very common occurrence in this process. But the delineation of whose scope, um, these are, are common, and also they are, um, helpful because we are trying to get, um, we're trying to get equity amongst the bidders. We want the, um, we want everyone to be bidding on the same material, and so that is, um, this number of questions is, um, what we're finding is not an unusual amount. We, um, um, I think the, the good sign of it is that we have a lot of interested bidders, and they're all asking to parse out this so that they are bidding fairly. Um, and I think that that also, um, people want to, uh, people want to bid and they want to have a competitive number, so, um, answering some of these questions is really helpful.
Thank you. Very, very clear. Lot of good information there.
Jennifer, question regarding that. Are we tracking RFIs that have potential cost impacts? So if we receive an RFI that may have a cost impact to the project, are we tracking that?
Um, we are tracking all of the RFIs. Um, we haven't put a cost number to them, um, because at this point in time, you know, these are influencing people's bids, but we could, um, we could do, um, we could take a look at them. I'd be happy to take a look at them and, and look at what, um, have more of a cost impact. I'd say that, um, as I have mentioned, the, the number, the RFIs that are asking about whose work is whose, I don't see a cost impact to those. Um, but there are a few, um, and, um, that I think are asking about, um, scope that could have one. Um, I, I would say that our, we just today got a question about tariffs, and there's been a, a change in the, um, today there was updates on tariffs, um, on a federal level, so that is one that, um, comes to mind immediately.
Yeah, it, it would be nice to have some type of log on the RFIs. We don't need to be too specific, but a, a scope clarification is not a cost, but if, for example, a subcontractor submitted a bid that said, "The drawings show X, it's not code compliant, we believe Y is required, please confirm", that would have a cost impact deviating from the drawings, and I think there should be some log produced by you guys that just simply says potential, doesn't have to indicate what the cost could be, just understanding the risk percentage of the RFIs. So if we have 10 RFIs that have a potential cost impact, we can put the architect team on that and say, hey, we need, we need to prioritize these ones to understand what the impact is to the bidding.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I mean, our, um, our design team, the Find Gold team, um, I have been meeting with them regularly to go through RFIs and identify, um, um, these items, but, um, that's a, a great point, and so we will, um, update that and I'll report back at our next meeting on that.
I appreciate that. All right, uh, any questions on the OPM report from anyone? All right, Ellen, uh, Library Director report?
Yes, so I'll, I'll skip to number two. So, um, even though this group approved, uh, the wave guide proposal to extend town fiber way back in January, and, um, that approval was shared. Um, IT is telling me in the meantime, wave guide has been bought out, and, um, there is an issue with the pole, the National Grid Utility Pole, of which we will need to be getting our fiber lead from. We are taking it from Westford Cat to 515 Groton Road. So, um, it's going to be a, a close, um, install. It's, we're working to see if we can, um, be sure that we have it installed before March 31st, um, or even that very first week of April. So, um, uh, Kevin at the IT department was terribly apologetic, said, you know, this had always been a wonderful vendor, but, uh, it just appears that, um, once the new, uh, owner took over, there was, um, this new issue with the number of lines on the pole, so we will keep tracking that, and we will have a backup plan, uh, even if it means we're using cell phones and laptops with hotspots, you know, for a few days in order to be able to tide ourselves over. You, you also see the paperwork in your packet. We requested because construction documents were finalized and received our second grant dispersment. So, um, you may remember that we had gone negative by about $186 as of the last warrant, and, uh, now we are flush again, and once we have a contract signed with the construction contractor, uh, we will be able to request our third grant dispersment, so we should receive two this fiscal year. And my understanding is that, um, the town treasurer does not, uh, anticipate, um, requesting and, and, um, floating a bond issue for this project until, uh, a May 1st bundle of bonding that she has planned. So this project won't hit the town, uh, taxpayers' wallet until, uh, we get into FY '26. Um, we also received order of conditions from both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. Uh, the latter, um, is going to be, um, submitted, um, you know, registered with the Registry of Deeds, uh, in, in Lowell. We also, um, will be following up with town council to receive, uh, an opinion that the planting, uh, of the site plan that was approved, will conform with the language in the 1987 deed. Uh, and finally, we had a second, um, uh, appearance on the Westford Historic Commission's, uh, agenda. We had met with them, uh, earlier, um, over a month ago, and, um, the, uh, letter for the Mass Architectural Access Board was on the agenda again, so several of us, Deb, Jean, Buffy, Christina, myself, went, and, um, uh, the upshot was that, um, um, three of the four members present, not the chair, um, did vote to send a letter, and I've received that today. So we do have the, um, accompanying letters that we need for Find Gold Alexander to, uh, get that submittal in play, and Jean might want to say more.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'd, I'd love to see a copy of that letter, because, uh, it went through a lot of discussion. But I also want to bring up one of the items that the chair requested, and I've been thinking more about it and wondering if we could do a little bit more. And this is not a filed sub bid. Is, is a stone? That's masonry. Is it, well, site excavation? So, or demolition. So, um, one of the concerns that this chair had was that we're not doing enough to keep the old stone from the original building, uh, using, to keep it and use it. And we earlier, um, there was the discussion that was just too expensive to keep all of it and reuse all of it outside. In the landscaping, we all, we as a committee agreed that we can't use that stone on the inside. It would just be too costly and, um, just not, not really worth it to try to reuse it on the inside of the building, but that we would use some of the stone as benches and maybe in walls and maybe, I'm not sure if Find Gold has figured out exactly how to use it, but, there was, I think Alicia was talking about a percentage of that stone that would be kept for use in the landscape, and I'm wondering if there's something more we can do to maybe have it moved to, the facilities department, the town. I'm losing my words. A town department that we can keep some of that stone, more of the stone than we were originally planning to use. Just in reaching out to the Historic Commission a little bit more.
I'd love to respond to that, Ellen. And Jean, I, so we do own some. We own some. We were trying to reuse stone in our scope of work and in the landscaping and to try to identify pieces that were of a certain size to be able to reuse things of that nature. And I'm what I can can do is pull together a summary that I can of of that reused stone. We we did own, I want to get the correct amount of what we owned for reuse, but we we had some scope in our drawing, our drawing set of that. So it is in the bid set right now. We actually were contemplating if we needed to have some potential deduct alternates. That was one of the places, but we we do have some areas in the exterior where I believe we're reusing pieces of that stone. The suggestion to potentially reuse more, I think that we could investigate that. I think that is the potential of having some additional cost because it's currently anything beyond what we have in the drawings right now would be additional cost. But and I think right now we've been trying to you know, await carefully the construction bids. So we are within a month of receiving the construction bids and to know whether or not we are on target for our estimate, if we are below or if we are above in that price. And I would think that the if we are below cost, that would be something that we could investigate and then potentially look into revising that scope. We'd have to do it on the sooner rather than later because the demolition would be one of our first items.
Right. And that's why I want to get it out there for people to consider. Maybe we need to talk with the town utilities. Facilities, utilities. What's the big building up in the hill? DPW. That's what I'm trying to think. If they can cart away the stone and Historic Commission can maybe find a use for it in some other project in the future so that we are retaining that old stone. Because that was that was one of the biggest issues, I think, that the chair had with the project was not keeping most to all of that stone. And I think it would be hands across the road. Good faith to try to do more than what we're doing. At least save it for the town. If the town can think of another use for it in a building project, lands, another landscape project, for instance, a park project, cemetery project, you know, just throwing things out there. I have a tendency to just throw ideas out there. Which he didn't like my idea of burying it underground, put it back into the earth that it came from. As an archaeologist, I thought he'd like that, but no. So so I'm trying to reach out more, try to give some other options for us to consider. And if it's something that we can't do before the bids come in, if we can act quickly on it and just have our ideas out there.
I I will take that on to to bring back to the design team so that it would be the the following. We'd get a summary of what we own right now that is being pulled out and reused so that we have a really clear description of that and understanding of that so that that's clear to the Historic Commission. You know, repeat, reporting back to them what that is. And then secondly, the scope of what may be potentially salvaged, either salvaged in this, in the sense of what you were just describing, the contractor puts it aside and that potentially from the contractor is not then responsible for disposing of it or removing it from the site, but it is put aside on our job site, then it can be moved within the town to an alternative location. Or if there's any potential of it being put aside to be reused somewhere else into our project. So there's sort of three, three pathways there. Two pathways and one is a summary of where we stand right now. Scott has a question.
How are we handling the cost of disposal in the budget? So I mean, we have this the stone, right? So is it is it assumed that there is there's no money, nobody, nobody in the budget allocated to dispose of it? Or there is money because I mean, if you're going to put it at the highway barn, there's some cost to get it up there, too. So it's kind of curious how that works financially.
It would be in, if there's any disposal of that stone, it's currently in the scope and it would be in our budget. So we could under, we could have that pulled out in our two. We've got reconciled estimates now, so we could understand what amount of money has been identified for that. It's generally better to identify these things before the bid because when you're asking for money back, you don't often get the same value as putting it into the bid. So we, we do still have time for any addenda that could be written into the non-trade bidders. I, we have a window of time where that's still open for us.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to volunteer the Howard Department without Kristen's blessing, just just asking about the money. That's all.
Yeah.
Well, Scott, though, for the purposes of the exercise, Jennifer is correct. You want to identify these cost items upfront before you lock in a bidder. Because you're getting it competitively bid. So Jennifer, what are your thoughts on providing a deduct alternate to deliver the material somewhere in the town of Westford? Just as a blanket alternate. Because if they're going to dispose of this, there's going to be a lot more trucking costs that would go with taking it away from the town of Westford than it would be to keep it within. And if that's already within scope, I think we request a deduct alternate to reuse and at least have that all that option available to us and then refine that scope at a later date if we decide to do it.
I don't think we could do a deduct alternate. We got four add alternates and they have to be taken in order. So if there's a deduct, would that be the first deduct?
Our alternates right now are all deduct alternates. So it would become the fifth deduct alternate. So we have, they are, it is important that they're taken in order. But and I think because the four already do have an impact to filed subbid trades and are technically our window for issuing anything to the filed subbider does end tomorrow at 2:00 PM, but we are trying not to exercise that if at all possible because you're up against the window of the bare minimum time. We don't want to, we don't want to do that if we don't have to, but it it would end up being the fifth deduct alternate.
We do have a containment wall, don't we? On the bank of the north border, at the end of the library parking lot, on the border of the land, under the care and custody of the select board. Don't we have a containment wall that has to be built? Maybe we could use the granite for that.
Tom Mahanor asked that when this question came up months and months ago. Lisa said she didn't think so, something with the stone.
Yeah, we don't know what state the stone will be in. You know, if we're going to end up with nice dressed pieces of stone or things that can't be lifted, can't be pieced together. Okay.
So Jennifer, you don't think we should add it to a deduct alternate at this point, being late in the game?
We would need to be pulling this together within the next week, ideally. Our 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 minimum, our sort of deadline date for any final note would be the 18th of March. But if we have a deduct alternate, the, the, one of the biggest challenges is what Ellen just raised, which is that we don't know there. Oftentimes people will say, well, quantify how much how much material will have so that we can prepare a deduct alternate. We don't know how much material it is. It may be more ideal to request a unit price based on let's say a, you know, a, a unit of measure of, you know, a square, square foot of stone material based on that because we don't have we could not quantify right now what it is. But unit pricing does give us something that is again something that we have in our drawing set right now. So we could just add to our unit price list. And again, unlike a deduct alternate, we're not required to take this in any particular order. I think it may give us more flexibility.
That's a good.
Sounds good. Mary Ann.
Thank you. I'm not sure where the place is to ask this, so I'll just ask and then please let me know if I should defer to another time on the schedule. So I was just noticing in the packet, the letters from, I think it's called Horsley Witten. It's the company that does this, the the wastewater analysis. So I think on February 13th, DEP came back with that. They need additional information to approve the permit application. And I was just wondering, is is that something that we think is just basic questions or would be coming across more complications?
The water superintendent is working with them, Mary Ann, so that permit request is still underway and there will be I, I think maybe one more final invoice in the future. So this is a issue with our wastewater treatment plant that, you know, predates all of our discussion. You know, there are issues with inflow and with at times excess flow and diagnosing exactly what is contributing to that, you know, has been a real challenge and will continue to be a challenge. But the water superintendent is reassuring he's working closely with them and we think that that's going to come out all right, although he will continue to have this challenge to try to understand, you know, with miles of piping, exactly what is happening that is causing the numbers to at times run higher than we want.
Okay, thank you. I have a, a different question. The butter, has that meeting been scheduled or has that meeting happened with the butter?
I still have to get in touch with the butter and we will be offering an in-person meeting.
I think at the last, our last meeting, it was agreed that needed to happen quickly.
I'm, I'm sorry, Jean, I didn't.
The last meeting of this group, I think everyone felt that that meeting with the butter needed to happen quickly.
Yes, and I, I did get some input from that committee, so I'm, I'm using that to respond to him.
Okay. Thanks.
That's a meeting that's supposed to be tomorrow? Or was that a different meeting?
No, that's, that's different. So
Okay, thank you.
Tomorrow's, tomorrow evening's meeting for trustees only is with the Prudential Committee of First Parish Church, and I will be emailing out a remote link in case the whole board doesn't need to be there. We're just updating First Parish on the impact on their parking and their fellowship hall reservation users, you know, who will experience some noise, some loss of parking. And, you know, some inconvenience for weddings and things of that nature. You know, as we become a construction site for 18 to 22 months.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions on the library director report? Okay, approval of warrants. Before we vote on these, I guess I would start with, does anyone have any questions on any of these warrants first?
So I would like to provide some background on the deposit. So American Alarm, which is the security firm that the town uses for a number of things and which the library uses for both its alarm system and for a piece of hardware which allows six of us at any given time to wear a panic alarm on a lanyard. And if we push the panic alarm, both town dispatches contacted and American Alarm. So they sent a proposal for installing this unit at 515 Groton Road. I, I had to send it back. It had some errors in terms of address and contact numbers and all. So I, I need you to understand, I'm asking you both to approve the deposit and then below to approve the proposal for double that amount to go to Kristen for a signature. And I wouldn't do that except that now we're at a timing crunch. So we want to get that installed before we have staff in the building and ready to undergo training in the temporary library site.
Well, if no one has any objections, I don't see a reason why we can't propose approving all of these at the same time. Buffy, I know you're always on top of the math. Or you usually do the math for us. So do we want to total these up and then maybe make a motion to approve all of them at once? Just in the, in the effort of time without having to approve all of these one by one?
I have a question about the $11,000 worth of Reaper Graphics. Or is that in the next?
I think that's under proposals.
Yes.
Yeah, that's additional services. So this would be Article Four.
So the warrant total, and we should vote on the journal entries separately, is 89,822 and 53 cents. And I can show you that if you want to see it. But that would be this warrant total and then J and K, the journal entries. We should make a separate vote. They're not on this warrant.
Okay. And what was that total on?
It's 89,822 and 53 cents.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. Will you approve the warrant number? Is it 610? No.
It, it's actually 2535.
TE. Okay. Warrant number 2535 and the amount of 89,822.53.
Okay.
Sorry, who did the second on that?
Scott.
Okay, thanks. Okay, here we go with the vote.
And that would be A through I, right, Ellen? Yep.
Yep. Sorry, I'm muted. The journal entries have been paid by another town department and your approval of the journal entries is to reassign that cost to our grant budget and out of the town manager's budget. So Ellen, we're really just doing A through I right now. Is that correct? Okay. All right. So here we go with the vote. Derek's eye, Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Secor?
Aye.
Siegel?
Aye.
Seal?
Aye.
Book?
Aye.
Hazelton?
Aye.
Kerpinske?
Aye.
Haddon?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Winberg is not here. Zegowitz is not here. So we have eleven zero zero.
And then on J and K, Ellen, I remember these from a previous meeting, maybe a couple of months ago, assuming it's the same concept.
Yes, so, so this is legal advertisements paid for by the town manager's budget and a legal counsel opinion, uh, paid for. And so the journal entry will reassign those costs to, uh, our, uh, public library construction project budget.
Okay, and the total between the two, I'll double check my math, but I think it's three thousand, three hundred fifty-nine and thirty-five cents.
That's what I get.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve J and K of Article Four totaling three thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, here we go. Derek's eye, Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach?
Aye.
Secor?
Aye.
Siegel?
Aye.
Seal?
Aye.
Book?
Aye.
Hazelton?
Aye.
Kerpinske?
Aye.
Haddon?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Winberg not here. Zegowitz not here. Eleven zero zero. So Mike, now we're doing the approval of additional services?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions on the additional services to start?
Yeah, I do about the, um, Reaper Graphics.
Um, would it be okay if I spoke to that?
Yep.
So, um, what we have for Reaper Graphics, we had a budget line item, um, prior to this. Actually, I think that our budget is at the end of, um, the, oh, it's, um, um, so towards the end of the packet, you can see that there is a budget line item of twelve thousand dollars for the, um, project that is for, um, advertising, printing, copying and bidding. Um, it's under the first category of administration. And, um, we are currently, um, have, um, utilized approximately ten thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars towards that budget, leaving just over a thousand dollars, um, remaining in that budget. And so, um, we had understood that we, well, we believe that there's going to be some need for additional printing. And, um, the, um, as of right now, the Fine Gold Alexander team has undertaken, um, two, um, printing exercises that were not in their original fee. Those are, um, if you are on the packet, it's page fifty-four, um, there is a, um, two invoices from Blue Edge Reaper Graphics that are for, um, printing work that has already, um, been completed. And that will take us over our allocated budget for this. What we have done is made a request to, uh, Fine Gold Alexander to prepare an additional service request to cover those two invoices. But then in addition to, um, allocate some, um, understanding of what, um, we believe some additional Reaper Graphics costs will be to, um, complete the project. In particular, um, we have issued drawings for bidding, but we have not, um, currently published drawings and issued them to everyone here or to, um, other town agencies in a physical copy. Because we understood that we will be publishing conform sets when the bidding phase was done. And so, um, we believe that that time will happen very soon when our bidding is done. Um, and we want to have physical copies available, um, for different town agents. So this, um, we got a quote from Blue Edge for what it would cost for, um, future printing. And, um, the, um, additional ten thousand dollars of additional printing in the future would cover approximately eleven, um, full drawing sets. So that would be drawings and project specifications. And so we're essentially asking for the twelve thousand dollar budget that had been originally allocated to be increased, um, almost double, so it would become a, a just shy of twenty-four thousand dollars. It's, um, it'll become twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, um, and eighty-five cents that we believe will cover what needs to happen for the duration of the project.
So I have a concern, um, I, most offices are becoming paperless. And, um, I worry that, uh, nine of those eleven copies will just go into a drawer and, um, only be looked at once. And that seems like that's kind of a waste. And our sustainability committee might, if they were on the line, might agree. If, if we don't know who is actually going to be getting these paper copies and using these paper copies on some sort of regular basis, I, I'm concerned it's money not well spent.
Um, I, we would encourage people to utilize digital copies as much as possible, which is why currently, um, we've held off on printing the drawing set in a digital, in a paper format. Right now, we're in a digital version, but, um, believe, um, we are going to need at, at least the, um, town, and the library to hold one paper copy. That might be two of them. We are holding aside some money. Some of this is just future budgeting for, um, we don't need to carry ten thousand dollars. We decided ten thousand dollars seemed like a fair number to carry, but we could, um, reconsider that amount. But we are basically just restocking the budget with this proposal.
So Jennifer, you, you mentioned there's additional printing that was more than expected. Can, what was that?
Oh, um, so there are two invoices in your packet. They come immediately following the, um, um, Fine Gold Alexander proposal, and those are for two different, um, uh, presentations. One, um, was for the, um, Historic Commission. Um, and these are large printed material that, um, was performed by Fine Gold Alexander that was beyond what their original budget, um, scope was. We did, um, I believe in, this before I was on board, but I believe the way that their original proposal had been written was to try to limit their printing costs as well. Um, and so there were two meetings. One was with the Historic Commission. Ellen, if you know the second meeting off the top of your head, I, I don't know what it was, um, but there were two meetings where they, um.
I actually think these were additional, uh, hard copies that the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission insisted on. So, um, because we were, had repeat meetings for internal town review with those two boards, I actually think that, uh, it had to do with all of the site review plans. Not so much the Historic Commission, but, um, what was necessary for the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission were full-blown plans, um, in multiple copies. That's my memory.
And, and the reason I'm asking the question, Jennifer, is just because these board meetings aren't unforeseen conditions. So we, we always had to go to Historic. We always had to go to Planning Board. Now, to Ellen's point, if we expected to go to one meeting or maybe two, and then we had a follow-up request, we had additional documents request, those are things that make sense. Those are above and beyond what could be expected. But looking at this from the perspective, if I was the owner of this building, it's hard to understand when we pay millions of dollars to architects and consultants that we can't figure out how many printed copies we need to build the project. So it's tough to understand that we have to pay more for printing, um, unless it's an unforeseen. If it's part of the standard project approvals, then it makes sense, uh, then it doesn't make sense to me. If it's additional, extra meetings, then I understand it more.
And we had gone through, um, we went through this, um, these conversations. This is actually, many of these were in January, so, um, you know, it's a fair question. Alicia and I went through their original proposal with them and Reaper Graphics to go through and itemize what they had owed us, um, in their proposal and why these ones were unique. And we, um, came to the conclusion that these ones were beyond what their original scope and proposal had identified. That is why these had been pulled out, these invoices. We, um, the two ones are from, um, January and that's been part of the conversation happening in the background. That's why they were not brought to your attention earlier, um, because we were, um, going through these costs with them uh, to make sure that this was a valid cost that should be, um, borne to the project cost.
So there's eighteen ninety of past printing to boards. And then there's ten thousand of future printing for unknown boards, no, unknown individuals in buildings scattered around town that may or may not need, I agree that there should be one at Town Hall and one in Ellen's office. But other than that, the rest could have PDFs.
Yes.
And is this the conformed set we're talking about or is this the bid set?
It will be the conformed set. We're suggesting that we don't print the bid set, um, because we know, because we've already issued, um, an addenda, there are sheets that have changed. And so, um, at the, um, conclusion of bidding, we will be publishing a conformed set. And so, um, really, because you're right on the money, there, there are oftentimes entire drawing sets that get printed and they stay in a roll and they don't get utilized. So, um, that, it's, you know, it's, it's just about, um, eight hundred dollars or so to print a set, somewhere in the, that realm, eight hundred and something change to print every set of drawings and specification. So it is a very, it's an expensive endeavor and we should be cognizant of that. You know, ten thousand dollars was our take on, um, holding some money there. We, uh, this is again for a proposal. This is not, um, this is to adjust our budget for the future so that we're not coming back to the joint committee every time we have another invoice from them so that we can hold, so that we readjust our budget to, to build in a safety net. But, um, ten thousand dollars was us making a guesstimate of what it could be.
Kristen, were you gonna ask a question?
Um, I was actually gonna ask a question and make a comment. So I have not gone through the entire bid set or the entire spec sheet. I know that there's quite a few sheets and I know there's quite a few pages. The town of Westford does have large format plotters, um, and does have copiers. So if the committee decides to go on the more conservative side, excuse me, you know, the side of erring less on the side of caution and, and reducing the number of copies, perhaps we could do something in-house on a very limited basis. So I just wanted to bring that. I don't think we should do everything in-house at all because there is, you know, professionalism associated with preparing these, uh, specifications and plan sets for the building commissioner, for others who'll be out in the field inspecting, for those who actually need the paper copies. Uh, but if there is an off, you know, chance that we need one extra copy or something, we may be able to handle that in-house.
The drawing set currently is, um, I believe it's, I have a, it open, it's two hundred and, um, forty sheets. Um, so it's a, it's definitely something we're printing a sheet or two. It, that's okay to do in-house, but it's definitely something probably beyond what an in-house plotter would want to do. But, um, I, I think that's a good approach for that. And, um, the specifications is twenty-one hundred pages long. So again, that's an eight and a half by eleven document, but, um, we would want to, um, some, send something like that out. One other point though about trying to move to paperless, um, we do have the construction trailer that will be part of the project. And, um, though there is, um, um, an expectation that there's a drawing table in there, um, a plan review table, we, um, we also have a large, um, a large LCD screen in there so that we can, um, you know, do drawing review on the screen as much as possible. I think that's another good point so that we're not, uh, we're being cognizant of not printing just to, um, limit those costs. Chris?
Shall we, um, make a motion just to make this be sixteen hundred dollars for the two plan sets that we thought we'd have being eight hundred bucks each? And then we can just move on to the next item?
It would be, um, it would be the sixteen hundred dollars plus, um, the, uh, nineteen hundred dollars, that of printing that's previously been, um, performed. I'm just gonna do a couple, uh, I don't know, four, two. So it, it, um, would adjust the number to something in the realm of thirty-four hundred, ninety dollars and eighty-five cents. Perhaps we round that up a bit, um, um, because we're looking to adjust the, um, the budget number we're holding. So four thousand dollars might be a more valid number, um, to cover the printing costs that have been done and then two additional sets.
Thank you. That would be my suggestion.
Up to four thousand dollars worth of printing.
Yeah.
I second that. If Chris was making the motion.
I convert my suggestion into a, a motion. Um, so I move that we, uh, approve, um, four thousand total for Reaper Graphics, both, um, for reimbursing past expenses incurred and then for, um, budgeting for two complete plan sets.
Second.
Second it.
I think I got Jean on that one.
Yep.
Okay, so here's our voting. Uh, wait a minute. Are we voting on A, B, and C or just B right now?
Um, I would suggest we just vote on B first.
Okay.
Because the motion's just for B.
Okay, let's do that then. Derek's eye, Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach?
Aye.
Secor?
Aye.
Siegel?
Aye.
Seal?
Aye.
Book?
Aye.
Hazelton?
Aye.
Kerpinske?
Aye.
Haddon?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Winberg not here. Zegowitz not here. Eleven zero zero for section B.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve warrants five A and C. And I'm gonna try to do this quickly in my heads. What was that?
Can I ask about, ask about C?
Before the motion, yeah.
Um, I, I thought that many, many months ago, we talked about adding roofing into WSP's commissioning work. Was that never added in? Is that why it's now coming as additional service?
Um, I, you're correct. I don't know about, um, I think the earlier discussion may have been before I was part of this team, but, um, currently it's not part of WSP's scope of work. What's happened is that WSP, um, in commenting about the independent testing, as I was mentioning earlier in the meeting, they, um, have recommended two tests that we add for construction tests, not performed by them, but this, by the independent testing agency. One is a roof flood test that's for, um, horizontal surfaces to, um, uh, for the waterproofing of that. Um, and then, um, the second one is some, um, electronic, um, roofing detection, which is electronic. And then the second one is some electronic roofing detection, which is electronic leak detection, which is utilizing some. Technology that helps to perform a, a view of the roof to, to identify leaks. It's a method for doing that. Scott, do you have a question?
Yeah, I guess one of the questions is if, if we do or don't have a skylight over the Marriott rooms with the little electronic testing, pick that up. My worries, skylights, that kind, those are asking for, for trouble. So is that the kind of thing that they would be checking forward or I guess, how do they? What does electronic testing actually test?
So it is. It's a method of doing. Of utilizing a camera type of device, an electronic device that. Would be. It's like an infrared, sorry, infrared scan. It goes over the membrane and detects water penetration under the membrane. And there's different companies that can perform this. And. Those are, it's, there's a standardized method of the test, but that would not be done on sort of such a high level where you're looking at the whole roof at once. It is more focused into areas of the roof. So I, I don't believe that we need to be concerned about, you know, they wouldn't be performing this test. In the middle of a skylight, it would be in other areas where. The skylight, you know, the skylight is a different condition that we're addressing. Chris, you have a question?
Just, you know, sort of with Mike's previous statement, an owner of a building would expect the roof wouldn't leak. So if there needs to be testing to confirm the roofing is done correctly, we assume that that would have been in the original budget already. I'm struggling to understand. Why there's so many checks and balances here for a very basic thing.
So there's two different parts here. One is that. So the. Before we even talking about this WSP commissioning cost. Unrelated to, well, that cost aside, rather, we are performing some construction testing. We have money aside in our budget for this. And so what we have determined is that we're going to. Add these. This testing, electronic leak detection testing and the flood test. Those are not performed by WSP. That is just additional testing that we're going to undertake. And it was raised because at two recent projects in the town, there were some issues with roof construction that had recently been installed, some, some leaking issues. So we are, we have a construction testing company. We're going to just confirm, we're going to include this scope of work that they're performing.
Okay, and I think that the issues that the other buildings had were, one was just poor workmanship and lots of punctures in the membrane and the PDM. And then the other, so I guess this camera test would detect that, would be. Sufficient but not necessary to detect that. And then the other issue we had was wind driven rain. So it seems like neither of these solutions would, of, of testing would detect a flashing problem or a, a driven rain problem. So we can't fully cover the risks that we identified in other projects with this proposal, as far as I understand.
So the proposal for forty-five hundred dollars for WSP commissioning is for. I think your second issue, which is the two conditions that you identified at other. Times on site or in other projects in the town's recent history. Their proposal is to perform three additional site visits for the total of forty-five hundred dollars that were specifically to monitor roofing installation. And to provide commentary on that. And so they're proposing them at ten percent installation, after ten percent of the installation is complete, after fifty percent and at ninety percent. And so those would be. With the poor workmanship, if that were to be a related issue, that is what this would ascertain. And then they would also be surveying of flashing and so forth that's happening. So the forty-five hundred dollars, which is, I believe. Gene, I, I think you're, you mentioned that historically you had understood this to have been included.
Yeah, I'm looking back at our, their proposal that Alicia sent us on eight fourteen. And this was to our subcommittee of Ellen, Beth, and me, who were reviewing the commissioning proposal. And Alicia was gonna work with the town to get approvals. They have construction phase commissioning, including below grade waterproofing, air and vapor barriers, cladding, fenestration, and roofing. So. You know, they have construction commissioning. Of roofing. So why do we need additional?
The. They're performing commissioning of the roofing, but this is to have them. Have. Three additional visits specifically just on the roofing.
Gene, do you have, this, sorry to interrupt Jennifer, there was a document that got released with a scope of work for WSP. And some of the commissioning items are solely submittal reviews. We would need to review that to understand the clarification. I believe some of the envelope commissioning was simply, we'll review a submittal and issue comment. It wasn't necessarily a site visit. But to that point, Gene and Jennifer, I believe we're gonna have WSP onsite for other site visits related to their commissioning. And if we were to approve this, I think it's worthy to have someone review the roof, assuming we, we don't go back and confirm they had it in the scope, which I don't think they did. I think there was other envelope construction, but I think we should try to combine this with another site visit. If they're gonna be doing envelope review, we shouldn't arbitrarily approve an additional fifteen hundred if we're already paying them to be onsite for a different matter. So I think we should look at something along the lines of approving this, so, you know, contingent upon a dedicated site visit for roofing review. Because if we're already paying them to be onsite to look at the envelope and the insulation while they're doing roofing. We don't want to incur an additional cost by signing this now, if that makes sense, Jennifer.
They're onsite currently for four visits. That's what they own for, for during the construction phase. And so if this would be to add dedicated visits solely for roofing review. If, and that came from the concern that, you know, you've had recent issues in town installations with roofing. And so there's a sensitivity to that. So these are solely for that purpose. Their intended, their current scope of work, what you already own, is that they would be onsite for a total of four visits. And on those visits, they would, they would be looking at the holistic envelope and the roof included, but they would not be dedicated visits for the roof.
Understood, but at fifteen hundred dollars, I mean, is the guy gonna go there the entire day? Because fifteen hundred dollars, you, you gotta figure that's a half day's worth of work to look at a roof. What are we paying, almost four hundred dollars an hour for that? That seems, it makes sense if that's the only reason they're traveling to and from, you're gonna have a four, six hour travel time. But I would like to understand that cost related to other site visits. If a commissioning site visit is two hours and we extend it to four, then sure, I don't think there's an issue on at least my end to pay additional cost for the value of the town to have an additional set of eyes. But we want to minimize that cost and control it a little bit is, is all I'm coming from, a lens of that. So I, I almost view this as, yes, we can increase the contract for the roofing site visits and include them. But I would also like to make a concerted effort to put some type of protection to the town that we can utilize another site visit to reduce the cost of this. But at the same time, all this extra work for a thousand bucks, I don't want to go crazy, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I have a question for both, I guess, for Mike and Jennifer, as you're both more expert than I am in this, is just the timing, right? Is the timing correct if they come out at the same time they're doing the other inspections for the additional roof inspection? So that, that's what, something I would want to know more about is the sequencing and the appropriate time for the inspections.
That is, I think, the benefit of having a dedicated visit just for the roofing is that you're planning your site visit on the roofing time versus they, you know, if you have four site visits, you're trying to sort of. Visit for a variety of issues and there could be at all different levels of completion. You know, we have a large envelope and. You know, we have the. Those two, the envelope is not sequenced. For construction site visits only, so we're really carefully choosing when that would happen. I. The alternative maybe, Mike, to, to address your concern is that we are. Looking at when the timing would be appropriate. I, I. Could this be? Could we look at aligning it with a meeting, but if, an, an already scheduled site visit? If not, are we, is it worth the fifteen hundred dollars because this is a critical time for the roofing? And that is what the site visit.
Yeah, and I, I think Kristen's question is valid. If we have envelope commissioning in our scope, I would imagine roofing is part of the envelope. So when they're sealing the exterior, they'd be doing roofing into it as well. But I, I would say at this point, it's just management. That's something Jennifer, we look at when we get closer to the date. And it's almost if we add three site visits, we're, we're giving ourselves three more site visits, really just to give ourselves more cushion and protect ourselves. So if we ultimately determine we can combine one, then we use that extra site visit for something else. This is a large project, having extra site visits for a commissioning agent, looking in our best interest isn't a bad thing, so. Any questions on article A before we vote on C? All right, I'll make a motion to approve article A, two thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. And, and article C of four thousand five hundred dollars, total of six thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
A second. Scott, you got it.
Or Scott? Or Chris?
Oh, Scott.
Okay, thank you. All right, here we go with the voting. On A and C, D. A and C, Derek's eye, Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach?
Aye.
Secor?
Aye.
Siegel?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me.
Teal?
Aye.
Hook?
Aye.
Hazelton?
Aye.
Kapinski?
Aye.
Dadden?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Wimberg is not here and Ziegelt's is not here, so it is eleven zero zero.
All right, any old business? No, new business. Timeline for a construction contract. Ellen, did you have an update you wanted on this?
So maybe what we want to do is consider this a piece of new business to come up at the March seventeenth meeting. And Jennifer can expand on what we need to discuss. We will have sub bids by that time and we'll also have a moving RFP results that will need to be approved so that that contract can go to the select board. So potentially, you know, facilitating the construction contract, whether it comes in on budget, over budget, that's a discussion we need to have. And I'd also like anyone who's interested in helping with a groundbreaking ceremony, especially someone from the permanent town building committee that might have. Experience of how the town has done it in the past. I'd love them to email me so that we can start to be thinking about that as well and be sure that we invite all the. Officials and interested parties and everyone who should be part of that celebration. Yeah, we can go back and take a look at. You know, the fire station and see who we invited. It'd be, it'd be similar to that, plus of course the trustees. Yes, and the border library commissioners and, you know, our representatives will, yeah.
On the timing of the construction contract, just to speak to what Ellen mentioned. So on the meeting on the seventeenth, what we will be asking is we should have the library moving RFP. So we will present what our bids were and we will have done some leveling of those bids in advance. And just to make sure everything is. Equal between them so that we can propose which moving company we would like to move forward with. That will be. Something that we'd like to get recommended for approval so that we can get them approved for. The select board meetings, final approval, I believe that's our, our step after that. The March seventeenth, we will not have the construction bids due, they won't be, have received yet. We will have the filed sub bids, so we can report back onto what those are. But if people are not aware, we don't accept a filed sub bid specifically. We accept the general contractor's bid, but it's in, it is a metric that we use when we get the filed sub bid numbers to see how they're tracking against our. Estimates, our construction estimates. So we are very eager to see those and so we will be reporting back on that. There won't be any action specifically requested of the joint committee. I think it'll be for information for you and. But the meeting that happens after that, which is March thirty-first. We are going to be making a proposal for, we will have the construction bids in. And so again, we will have leveled them to make sure they are complete. And we will have an understanding of where the bids are on who was the lowest bidder. But then we do have deduct alternates, as we've noticed, as we mentioned, rather. So we will have a comparison of if by taking a deduct alternate or by taking some of them or all of them, what happens to the low bidder? Should that change what that is? So we will be presenting that information to you. But we are looking to get. Approval ideally for a general contractor. Our, we're hopeful that it will be on budget or below budget. And that would be. So that we can undertake a contract with them. Quickly and with our goal of being issuing a notice to proceed within the month of April for that contractor.
A comment on the contract and Kristen, you may need to correct me or reel me in here because I know I'm gonna work with your team on the contract. One of the things, Jennifer, prior to your time that came up was a little bit of heartburn related to the designer coming back and asking for additional funds for telecom services. When we knew we had telecom in the building, obviously we talked tonight about some additional printing contest, costs. So I wanted to reach out to you and really request in relation to the contract. Some effort and some plan from your team on responsibilities to define those for the construction aspect of this project. Obviously, we need to confirm through bidding, we're under budget, et cetera. But I, I think some form of what I use is RACI charts, not sure if you're familiar with that. But I certainly, if, if you're familiar with those, something along the lines that defines who's responsible, who's accountable, who's consulted, who's informed. And when we get into things like picking finish selections, having some type of matrix to rely on through construction that says Ellen needs to be consulted when we select the finishes. The architect's responsible for this and who's informed, I think would help draw better clarity to who needs to do what. We have a large committee here that has to work with approvals. And I think defining change orders, major components, submittal review, change orders, the highlights of the construction progress of who needs to be responsible and what the expectations are would be great. Kristen, ideally, I would see something like that defined in a contract as an attachment that clearly defines the roles of each party, what's needed. But we can obviously talk about that separately as we work through the contract review. But Jennifer, I don't know if that makes sense. But Jennifer, I don't know if that makes sense as something you guys can provide to us, um, as something as we prepare into construction, just to bring more order to it and then also help the general that, hey, these are our expectations and who needs to be consulted ahead of time. So I know they'll do a lot of that, but you, you may need to help me as well understand where you guys are gonna fit in versus the general. And that, they could be part of that as well.
Uh, that's a great point. Um, I, um, what I'd like to suggest is that since we do have a meeting on the seventeenth, um, I've given you a little preview of what is my agenda items for those. I don't know your other broader agenda items. But um, what I can suggest is that we bring um, a, a draft version of a RACI chart um, for everyone here to understand. This is a tool that we use um, very frequently during construction. I think, Mike, it's a, it's a helpful tool because um, these questions will come up. And having to be able, defining some of them in advance would be um, is always a, a, it's better to be proactive rather than reactive for these items. Um, and then also, um, it will speak to, um, you know, when we are reporting back to this group um, regularly through construction, um, when things need to be um, elevated or um, what things we um, can proceed with, um, as time is of the essence during construction.
Absolutely, and proactivity is a big goal for this, this project, you know, reactivity costs money, proactivity saves money. So we wanna, I, I, from our perspective on the committee, we wanna do what we can to understand our responsibilities, have Ellen's team understand their responsibilities and make sure that we're not a holdup and we're progressing what we can on the construction side of things to make sure it's, it goes smooth. Okay, um, any other questions on the contract, anyone? Kristen, anything to add to that?
No, we do have an internal meeting with the CHA on Wednesday afternoon, so we as staff can go through that in a little more detail at that point in time. Thank you for bringing it up, Mike.
Yep. And then approval of the Amplifund uh, monthly report, Ellen?
Yes, so um, so actually, our, our spending um, had not changed in January because all of the effort in January was to complete the construction documents. So um, if you will just approve that, um, I sent the order of conditions as attachments. I sent uh, all of the minutes from January. And um, you know, as of uh, this morning, I uh, sent the invitation to have Jennifer replace Alicia um, as the OPM with access to Amplifund. So now as we start to uh, be spending more money and meeting the regulatory language um, that Amplifund tracks, she will also be um, uh, inputting some of each monthly report.
Okay. So to clarify, any motion on that, you s- do we still?
If you would approve it, that would be lovely.
All right.
I can share it if you want, one thing.
Any, anyone have any questions on it? And if not, can we have a motion?
Motion to approve the Amplifund report.
Second.
Here's our voting. Dirks, I, Fleckner?
I.
Roach?
I.
Secor?
Hi.
Siegel?
I.
Teal?
I.
Hook?
I.
Hazelton?
Hi.
Erpinski?
Hi.
Dadden?
Hi.
Roberts?
I.
Wimberg is not here, Zagowitz is not here, eleven zero zero.
Our next scheduled meeting is March seventeenth, so two weeks from tonight. And I believe that's, that's it for the agenda.
So trustees do need to stay on, so we have our monthly meeting next. But um, thank you, everyone, and um.
We need a.
Much to, much to adjourn town, town building committee?
Yeah. Scott made the motion.
Yep, and I believe Chris seconded.
Thank you. Here's our voting. Dirks, I, Fleckner?
I, sorry.
Roach?
I.
Secor?
Hi.
Siegel?
I.
Teal?
I.
Hook?
I.
Hazelton?
Hi.
Erpinski?
Hi.
Dadden?
Hi.
Roberts?
I.
Wimberg not here, Zagowitz not here, eleven zero zero. We are adjourned at eight oh eight.
Thanks, good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye-bye.